Regularly scheduled, just looking meeting for Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty five. Uh, happy Cinco de Mayo Day. Uh, for those who've celebrated, uh, first order of business, budget releases, Charles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Make sure the public forum, anyone wishing to address the board, public forum, come on up.
Jeff Hocking, Church Street. Excuse me. Like the comment on six point one pension COLA. The history of the COLA clause. This contract language was the union proposal awarded in a June nineteen eighty seven binding arbitration decision. During negotiations prior to binding, uh, the town didn't want to be locked into a specific COLA percentage every year. The union offered this compromise language where the COLA would be awarded every two years and tied to the CPA. For twenty years after this award, COLA was awarded every two years pursuant to the contract clause. Only once in the twenty years was the same COLA percentage awarded in back to back reviews, exactly as it was intended. After two thousand eight, the town strayed from this process and had instead changed the rules, not followed the spirit of the arbitration decision, and therefore created a contentious battle every two years. This language was not for a yes or no decision, but instead for a decision of the COLA amount percentage. Several years ago, when I explained the history of this co- uh, clause coming from binding arbitration, not a standard negotiation, Mitch Goldblatt admitted he didn't know that. This is the person guiding you through the process without the knowledge of the true intent of the language. The COLA language is only in the police contract, as Ms. Renner stated last month, that they are taking a narrow request and making it larger. By adding the other unions into this review, it doubles the financial impact. It has been stated many times over the years by the Board of Selectmen that it is only fair to give it to all. That might be fair if the employee contributions to the pension plans were the same. The police contributes about seven percent of their pay to the plan. The town employees contribute about half of that, and the Board of Ed employees contribute nothing. Thirty-seven years has elapsed since this clause was added to the police contract. If this was much of a, as much of a concern for the other unions as the Board of Selectmen makes it out to be, why haven't the other unions or the Board of Selectmen passed and negotiated into their contract in the last thirty-seven years? Uh, last month, Matt Hawey explained that the Seamer's two point O reboot of the municipal pension plan will not have a COLA provision. That is correct, but the GPD pensioners are from the police employment pool era that is part of the original Seamer's plan, which provides for an annual COLA. We aren't even asking for the yearly COLA like them, but just a semi-annual COLA we were promised in nineteen eighty seven. The language provides for the review by the Board of Selectmen. Many times over the years, the Board of Selectmen has relied upon, relied upon the Pension Committee's decision on the COLA as a basis or reason for their decision. Several years ago, in a public meeting, Matt Hawey reminded us that the Pension Committee's charge is narrowly focused on managing the money. That their role, that is their role, and as such, they should be not part of this. The board has, that board has had a revolving members over the years, and most, if not all, have no idea what the history of this clause is. I would ask that you follow the intent of the nineteen eighty seven binding arbitration decision and award a COLA to the GPD pensioners. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else wishing to address the board, public forum. Hearing none, let's move on to item three. Minutes, we have April twenty first, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second, second, any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Three dot two, the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, special meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing done, uh, let me try your minds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item four, Public Works Director, Dave Castro. Morning, Dave.
Morning.
What I want is to consider and take possible action to contract with Durham Middlefield for brush grind.
Yeah, it's time.
Time again.
Pretty impressive up there.
The pile's big, and we're actually bringing in, it seems like we're taking more every year. It's, it's, it's grown, it's grown. Uh, at some point, we may have to look at grinding it twice a year. I mean, really close to it now, but, uh, so let's see, we'll just look for approval to go through Durham Middlefield and, and grind the piles. Fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
How much of that material, once it's ground up, gets sort of pulled out by, because people can come in to take that, those chips, yes?
The load and go is actually increasing in popularity. We're noticing more people coming for it now. Before, in the past, when we first started the load and go, it was a couple trucks and, you know, the loader operator would load them and he'd clean around the area. Now he doesn't have time, because as soon as he loads the big trucks, the pickup trucks are coming, everybody's putting tarps under beds and he's loading, um, a lot of material, a lot of, uh, a lot of the wood chips and the, uh, and the mulch out of there now. It's going pretty good.
Great.
How is this price compared to last year?
It's the same price. We're locked into a, uh, two-year contract.
Is this the second year of her?
This is the second year of that contract. It's a two or three-year contract, they have to check. Locked into it.
I know you have a piece of equipment and we say no, but does it become a point where it's cost effective to have our own, or is it just?
No, that's, that's big.
Just serious.
Yeah.
Now, like, in excess of a quarter million dollars, use it twice a year.
Yeah.
It's a, that's the purpose of these square for multiple towns.
It works out pretty good. Yeah, it's, it's been great.
You get stuck in operators, moving it.
Yes. Didn't know enough about it to, to know.
So, many years. I always thought it was a logical thing to, but I mean, it's literally one of those machines you might use twice a year.
See? I just, this is not related to this, I just thought of that other project that you initiated about getting, maybe Jazz initiated it about getting rid of, um, stuff that was piling up so much and.
Oh, the wood piles.
Yeah. And, and there's an outside company taking that and paying us, right?
So, no, uh, we found, we found a company on state contract and they grind it and they haul it away.
Okay.
The, the bigger log wood.
Okay.
Um, but I actually reached out to a vendor who has a logs, it's called a wood processor. And I have to talk to Matt and to the attorney about it, but, um, the idea is down the road to pay for that processor, you, you get it for a week, and they'll cut and split all the wood, and then we can open that up to residents too, which would, would create less, uh, of a cost for us. So.
We'd have to see if that's in compliance with our permit.
Oh, those little details.
He's just checking.
Sorry?
Who brought her to the meeting?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I, I thought it was such good.
Now, it's the plan, you know, for wood that the town ends up cutting, the logs that.
Right.
So we, we don't, we plan on a volley to a point where we would be accepting larger than three-inch logs.
No. No, everything that.
So it's not gonna end up being as above.
It's just from us, it's everything that we're generating, our tree crew is generating a lot of wood.
I know that's been a discussion.
Yeah, our permit definitely limits us to the three inches from others, but.
Right.
What should people do for the benefit of the public? Is there a responsible way for people to dispose of their old wood pile?
There are wood processing facilities that are licensed in the area that they can take their larger wood to. They don't have a use. Oftentimes, I recommend people put, you know, on Facebook or out front of their house, free wood, because a lot of people are out scavenging for free wood. But, um, you could also bring it to local, there are, we have a list of local wood processing facilities that are licensed to take that larger wood.
Matter of fact, when our tree crew, when they take down bigger wood, they'll ask the homeowner to go out the wood. And a lot of times they'll take it and then sometimes they'll say, no, but leave it, my neighbor wants it. Okay, fine. So we do that too.
Anything further?
No more questions for me.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? Uh, any further discussion? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item five, Park and Recreation Director Pam Gary, uh, five dot one, discuss upcoming Bluegrass Country Festival on the Green. Good morning, Pam.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Uh, yep, we've got you.
All right, great. So just to expand on the memo that I sent to all of you. Um, we've been busy, um, planning for a new upcoming country bluegrass fest. And I will let you know that outside of the memo, the reasons this was even born was because of the survey that I put out last year, uh, to the residents. And one of the, um, a lot of the responses were that some of the genre that we weren't providing with the summer concerts was country and bluegrass. So that's where it came, I simply could have just put in a bluegrass band on Sundays, but that's not the Pam Gary way. So we wanted to try something new, and, um, this is what came out of it. So while we've been planning, um, as you very well may know, is that there's a lot of expenses that comes with something like this. So there's very few ways, especially with the Guilford Green, to bring in revenue to offset these expenses, because you can't charge for parking, um, the way this, the green is set up, which is typically, and I'll use my potato and corn festival as an example. Um, that was born, um, as a three-hour event, which is now three days, and parking is a big way of bringing revenue to try to offset those fireworks costs and the band cost and the whole setup of the event. So with this being on the town green, that eliminates revenue for parking. Um, we could very well gate it all off and charge an entrance fee, we'd rather not. Um, so that's where we felt it was important to come to the Board of Selectmen to see if we could get permission for beer and wine as a designated area for twenty-one and older. Um, I believe it's the Arts Craft Expo that also has that approval. And from, you know, I've been there, I've partaken in that area, uh, it's been, it was really, really lovely, it was like outside of the tented area, but, um, I think that, you know, that would help us gain the revenue that we need to, um, offset the costs of the bands and some of the other entertainment.
Well, I agree with you about fencing off and charging admission, I, I wouldn't support that, but is it within our regulatory right to, you know, either pass the hat or have a, a table, a parking rec table with donation area available? Is that a possibility?
Um, anything's a possibility, but.
It wouldn't make a dent, I, yeah, I don't think it would.
Okay.
Um, first of all, Pam, thanks for getting back to me with the answer to my, my question. Do you mind if I share that?
Oh, please.
In case anybody's thinking about it, that, that the fact that North Guilford St. John's Church does their annual thing. Um, and Pam has been up, was on top of that and way back at the beginning of the planning process, was in contact with them just to make sure that, you know, it didn't take away any of their.
When is this good?
It's late August, I think.
Your?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the last Saturday in, it was July.
July twenty-six, right? And she, she didn't feel that there was a conflict whatsoever, she, matter of fact, she was like, can't wait to join the, join the fun.
Yep. And I think that's very Pam, reaching out, like, making sure that that was okay, so thanks for that. Um, but I, and I, I just want to ask, I don't remember if we talked about this last time, did we talk about doing this, the, that it might be better to do this at the fairgrounds? Because of the parking and, you know, now the alcohol on the green issue and.
We, we did not talk about that. Um, there certainly would be a cost to that, I'm not sure what that rental fee is. Um, matter of fact, I'm meeting with the Agricultural Commission about the, uh, fireworks this week as well, just to kind of come up with maybe, because we don't ma, we don't gain any revenue from that either, and that's a thirty thousand dollar show, and I don't understand why we don't get to get some of that revenue to offset our town's expense. So, you know, it's, I, I feel that this won't be as big in the first year, that I think this location is, is good, and I think it's gonna help bring people in to go to the businesses, and, and I think we should reassess after the first year whether we should move it or just keep it where it is. I mean, the Arts Expo is huge. You know, they bring in a lot of people and the businesses love that, people go around and shop and.
Yeah. We deal with that, so. Yeah, that's, that's a good point about the first year.
Any concerns about the, the alcohol and wine, the beer and wine, it's precedent, uh, for a town event? You know, as, as Pam has indicated, we have allowed others, um, Green Stage, uh, was allowed to have alcohol, um, and the Hand Fest Festival as well, so, um, I'm not sure if that's. We're allowing it anyway, why wouldn't we allow it for an event that we're putting on here to see? Uh, to, to, to test, uh, the reception, reception we're gonna get for this kind of festival, so.
As, as, you know, when, when you relax a rule for anything, you have to think about the precedent down the road. And I'm not necessarily against this, I'm just trying to think if there's any thing that will say, well, why did we do that? You know what I mean? Um, but I guess if another town group, just pick the library for instance, said they'd like to do it on the green, you, you would look at it, you, you look at each case individually, wouldn't be just, oh, we did it for Park and Rec, so now we're gonna do it for anybody that wants to do it. I, I mean, has to look at it as an individual thing each time, right?
Yeah. I, I don't think that we've denied one that has come before us.
No.
Either, uh, that I can recall now.
And, and years ago, after the, um, it was a fundraising, you know, the library raised a million dollars towards the expansion, and I came to the selectman at the time and asked to have, um, a little party to recognize the larger donors, and we did it when the library was closed, and, and it was an invitation only, but I got permission to serve.
On town property, on another piece of town.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it keeping it on this limited thing, and that would be another thing or reason to move it to the fairgrounds or whatever, as it matured.
Right.
You know, at Sandy's point, as long as we keep it as limited as we can, I mean, it it started with, was it the chamber or the handcrafts or something started with that area? It seems to work, I mean.
I remember once they, the handcrafts or the chamber wanted us to allow people to bring underage children in, and we said no. So we, we kept it pretty strict.
Uh, Pam, are you also considering food trucks or food vendors, uh, potentially even restaurants, uh?
Absolutely, we have to have food. We don't have food, we'd be highly criticized. I will also add too that, um, I did reach out to Chris, uh, Chief of Police, just to make sure that there hasn't been any problems in the past, I haven't heard back from him yet. I mean, I certainly never heard there were any problems, and if there were, I don't think you'd, the Board of Selectmen would continue to allow that to happen. Um, and then also with this, if we get the approval here, we would make sure, because we, we all know that people bring it. You know, it's so hard to, you know, manage everybody, especially on the green during a Sunday concert, but at least then we could limit on that day to tell people they can't bring things in.
Um, geez, you mean people do bring?
So who, who, who actually is, if you're doing it, who's gonna be serving? Serving, who's gonna manage the, the bars and brew?
So hopefully, I, I know, um, one of our commission members, and I also have it on our agenda for tonight too, um, has been in touch with the owner of Two Roads, which is also a Guilford resident, so he's very interested, so it would be his licensed, you know.
Okay, so they think they've done like a last of fest in the past?
Yes.
Are we, are we opening up to a big situation?
Okay, so. I, I could support it from.
Yeah, Pam, at what time of day, is it all evening or is it afternoon into evening?
It's, right now, it's three o'clock to eight, five hours. We expect to have kind of a later lunch and then into dinner.
We're gonna have to prove a noise or interference as well. We don't for the regular concerts, right? And those usually are done by, by eight o'clock anyway, so I don't see any issue there.
Think we should have the Green Committee weigh in out of respect for their role? Just gonna.
We, we could certainly have them, but, um.
And you're gonna come back as?
Well, yeah, but.
I have no problem. Vote on moving it with, you know, the caveat that they renify it.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, do we need to move this, you know?
Yeah, that's more than, yeah, that emotion.
Yeah.
Second.
I'll second.
Uh, that motion includes advising the Green Committee that this is what the Board of Selectmen intends to do. And they're certainly welcome to, uh, give us an opinion on the appropriateness.
So what we're actually voting on is not the greens, it's not.
It's the alcohol, so. The alcohol is not a green, so.
Should we, um, I'm sorry, would it be appropriate for us to want to see the plan that specifically?
We could do it, Pam, we could, we could approve it pending seeing that.
Yeah, yes, of course.
Which I think is gonna take time to.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'd suggest. I don't, just giving a blanket of, hey, I'm not, just because it is a town.
Well, like what we require for the Woodgrass Festival, which shows the area and talks about what, you know, what the precautions are that they put in place. We'll have, uh, Pam and the board.
We can see, see the license that it's being done on.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I'll add that all to my motion.
I'll second.
Uh, anything further? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, congratulations, Pam.
Thank you.
Keep pushing the envelope.
Always do.
Oh, really? I've not, not noticed.
Have a great day, thank you.
You too. Uh, item six. Park and Recreation Resources, Rich Goldblatt, bench, good morning, six dot.
Morning.
Discuss and take possible action on the cost of living adjustment of our current pension recipients.
Yeah, this is a item that you had listened to and discussed at the March seventeenth meeting, uh, tabled at that time, uh, pretty much asking to hold off any decision until after the budget vote, um, so we're back. Okay. Let's see, we'll take off the table and discuss, uh, any questions that I can answer, I hope to be able to do some.
Is there a motion to take it off the table?
Some of second.
Second, now let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
So.
So we, um, you know, you, you got, I got teed up here by Jeff Hocking and your public, uh, uh, participation. Um, this is a clause that is in the police, uh, contract to look at every two years. Let me just, uh, read you what it says in the police contract, it's Retirement Board, which has been interpreted to be the Pension Committee, shall cause a study to be made by the plan actuary and prepare reports to the first selectmen for submission to the Board of Selectmen every two years, commencing with the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, nineteen eighty-six, on the current status of the pension benefits made to all retirees who were previously police employees, and the effect of economic conditions on the payment over that period. The Board of Selectmen, after receiving the report referred to in the preceding paragraph, shall have the right in its sole exclusive discretion to make adjustments in the payments being made to former police employees previously retired under this plan. So that's what brings us here, you, uh, should have received last time, uh, the, the actuary report that was, uh, engaged by the, by the Pension Committee. Um, so they did their job to get the report to you, they did make a recommendation not to, uh, put forth a COLA, but that is once again strictly in your sole and exclusive discretion as to whether you want to go forward, so. But that's their recommendation, you've got the report from Milliman with the costs. Uh, they're set up the way Milliman always does with a full CPI, a sixty percent of CPI, and as has been discussed before, you did something totally different the last time, uh, this was, uh, discussed by coming up with a, they, just a number to work back into, and it ended up being about a two point eight percent COLA at that time. Um, there is no obligation for you to, uh, look at, uh, the other plans, but traditionally, and I say traditionally because I think every time a COLA has been given or not given, it has been given to all three groups at the same time, same, same rate. That's up to you for discussion and I, uh, recommendations are not.
I, I needed a clarification from what Jeff read to us. Prior to two thousand eight, and I may have misunderstood what you said, Jeff, it, it sounded like you said that every, every two years from the inception in eighty-six or whenever it was, to two thousand and eight, there was a, there was a, uh, in, a COLA increase?
It was a COLA, can I speak?
Yes.
So for the first twenty years, it was, there was a COLA given every, every two years, and my point was that the way it was structured so that the town didn't want to be locked into like six percent way back there for their, for their, you know, importunity, so it would be, if you looked at the sheet, it would have been maybe two point eight, two years later, four point oh, three point one, it was only two back-to-back cycles where it actually ended up being the same, so it, it followed the CPI similar to how it was originally put in there. That was my point, but for twenty years, right till two thousand eight, uh, was the last one, it was given, um, you know. I, I don't, I don't personally know if it was given to everybody all those years, I have no idea. But this is, is in the police contract, so I guess my other point was that it, by adding everybody, it creates a, it doubles the exposure, so to speak.
I, I just want to comment on the language, but you seem to suggest that it was prescriptive, that we had to do one, it was just the amount. That's not what that language, uh, reads to me, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, so I just wanted, I wanted that to be on the record. Uh, that, that language was written specifically for that intent, and that, that, that intent is not to grant a COLA every two years, and the decision is what percentage, this is a decision on whether to grant. So I just want that clear for the record. And.
Every second, please, disagree.
So I was there, I mean, a lot of us that were there in eighty-eight. Right, well, then you got, then you got a bad lawyer. Well, that's what you thought was gonna. There's no more, the commissioners are gone, unfortunately, the selectmen, there's nobody on that side to even go talk to them.
But if you just interpret it from that language, it does not sound like we must give a, a, a increase every two years.
Not correct, and I, you, you have, you didn't from two thousand and eight until just recently, the last, the last time around. Um, so obviously that, that argument didn't, wasn't pervasive enough during, during the twenty-year period, you know, from eighty-six, uh, also, so. It's, it's your decision, but i, 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 I do agree with the first selectman that it does not say that you are required to give a, a cost of living adjustment, it just says you're required to look at a report which has been put together, the Pension Committee has done their, their job, uh, they requested from our actuary Milliman, uh, report. You've been given copies of that report.
We've got a lot of percentages, and is there any dollar amount that you can assign to doing this or not doing this?
Well, the increase in liability shows up on the, uh, page even number here.
It's the amortization. It's a, it's the increase in the fourteen-year amortization, that's what you look at. So if you add up those buckets, um, on, with the fifteen-dollar minimum, uh, the last page, in a round of one fifty-seven, forty-six, and ninety-six, which is three hundred thousand dollars, um, and then.
A year.
Sixty percent, yeah, per year.
Per year.
And then if you look at, uh, the, um, sixty percent, that number is closer to one eighty, one eighty-five, I think is the way it works out.
Mitch, can you remind us on that table, the headings, for example, full CPI, six point three percent, two point nine percent, what are those percentages?
So six point three percent would be the full, full, uh, uh, cost of living adjustment, the two point nine goes for some, anybody who is just in it for one of the last two years. Since you're looking at this every two years, the one year would be two point nine percent, the two-year, which is what your look back is, is the six point three, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's actually possibly called out in the. Yeah, as, if you go to the front, front page from, from, uh, Jen Castellano's letter, as requested by the town, we have examined the change in the CPI over the two-year period from January first, twenty twenty. As requested by the town, we have examined the change in the CPI over the two year period from January first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Over that two year period, the CPI has increased six point three percent. Over the one year period from December, from January one, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the CPI has increased by two point nine percent. Thus, if it were desired to increase pensions as of July one, twenty twenty-five, according to the full change in the CPI, we would suggest the adjustments be shown as below. And it just shows that, you know, if the employee, and you'll see that little little chart below. It says if they retired before January first, twenty twenty-three, which is almost everybody, you get six point three percent. If anybody fell into that retirement from January first, twenty twenty-three to December twenty-first, twenty-first, twenty-third, then they would receive two point nine. So the two point is only for anybody who's recently retired.
Okay, and right now, that CPI is two point four percent.
Right now?
Right now, looking at the past twelve months, that's two point four percent. That was the most recently released.
Okay. That was, that wasn't the, uh, charge of the actuary?
I understand.
You're look, you're looking at data from current, current information?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be, that would be proportional, I believe mathematically, you know, two point four out of six point three would be.
Okay.
The numbers would be, you know, and of course, the police only piece of that is, police piece is about half of the total.
That's a little over.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the moment, just focusing on the police, since this is the contract language that we're talking about. Jeff, again, very helpful, keeps everybody focused on this. And honestly, it's just, it's it's helpful to hear this stuff.
Yeah.
Because some of it's a little bit of ancient history. He mentioned, um.
That's what happens when you're around.
Other than the alternative.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, there was a binding arbitration somewhere along the way. You know what he's talking about?
Well, he made that clear to me the last time we had this discussion that there was a binding arbitration is what puts it that into this particular contract. The language that I read to you, I don't believe has changed since nineteen eighty-six when it was put into the police contract. This is the most current police contract that I'm reading to you from. Uh, the language has not changed. I was, it does not say in here, nor nor would necessarily say it that based on binding arbitration.
No, but it was originally, this paragraph was originally.
I can, I have the document.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing.
It was, you know how binding works.
Sure.
Either the town or the union. So on this particular, it was like item thirty-seven, they awarded the union language. And we we lost a bunch in there, but this was the one.
That doesn't help you that this was your language.
Yeah.
Because it not doesn't say.
I'm saying it was. The town wanted basically, no, no, we don't want to give six, you know, like early on in in negotiation. That's why I'm saying our language was to soften it, you know, and all that. And I will tell you that I've, I mean, I've researched to get a lot of background paperwork on this. And, you know, I mean, most everything's gone, um, in the state archives and stuff. And they kept telling me, go to the, I mean, I found a lot of it in our our own office. But they said, go to the town clerk. Town clerk has to keep all of this stuff. Well, as went there, she went down and looked through the, she couldn't find anything from commission minutes, meetings to copies of this. There was a, I can't remember the term. There's another document that pre-binding, like when you're trying to work it out last minute. Yeah, some kind of, but none of that, there there's no record of any of it downstairs or anywhere, but. Having not been there, I really can't comment too much, except that I think what Jeff is portraying, I believe, is probably correct. And and you know, going through binding arbitration, uh, my guess is, based on what Jeff is saying, that the town said, we don't want to put in a pension, period, I mean, depending on the call, excuse me, call it at all. And the police were looking at that time, he's saying six percent. Well, you go to binding arbitration or the other. So they probably, I don't know if the town softened its position, but it sounds like the the police softened their position to say, well, we we don't want, we we do want six percent. We're probably not gonna win that, you know, versus, so they put in the the language that's accepted. And obviously, the arbitrator, whoever he or she was at the time, that's probably a three person panel uh, determined that particular item would go this way. And then this language I just read to you, which ultimately has changed since nineteen eighty-six, probably came right out of that binding arbitration into the contract.
Wasn't exactly as you say, so it wasn't, it wasn't like we didn't ask for six percent. It was the you, the the town's position was they didn't want to get locked into a percentage forever. Like, um, like even the the Seamers is is on those, you know, sliding scale. They didn't want to get locked into some percentage back in eighty, I don't blame them, back in eighty-six, eighty-seven, that would then, here it is, twenty twenty-five. Um, so that was, so the language was our kind of counter proposal was to the board, hey, every other year, tie it to something so that it it they're not, doesn't lock the town into it.
Right, so that.
Thanks, thanks for that.
And I can also, I'd be glad to provide, it's pretty thick. I'll, I'll make a copy and drop it off to, so you have a copy of the binding arbitration decision? Be helpful, yeah.
That would be helpful, assuming, so is that language, though, identical to what Mitch just read?
It's never changed.
Okay, so thank you again, and and thanks Mitch for for taking through all this. I mean, the my problem with this is language that comes out of a binding arbitration, it's even more rigid than some other negotiations. So to Jeff's point of the intent before this language became rigid and whether that's a promise or not, I mean, promise is whatever the language says. That's what we've got to honor, and it doesn't say, with all respect, what Jeff is suggesting it says. Honestly, whatever anybody's intent was before this binding arbitration is of very little consequence to me. Just analyzing how to make a decision all these years later. We're stuck with the hard language. That is what it is. Couple of questions, and sorry if I if I asked this already. Social Security eligible also?
Yes.
Okay. And and I remember two years ago, we got a list of the number of pensioners that were under, still under sixty, I I always write sixty-five, but I guess at this point it's sixty-seven.
Active?
The number of people that are collecting the pensions eligible for what number of those?
Don't have that.
You would have prepared that list for us a couple of years ago, so I guess by adding a couple of years, I'd still be interested in it. And do we know the median monthly benefit halfway point?
How much?
Yeah.
No. I mean, I, once again, once again, that's information I could provide to you. I wasn't prepared to provide to you today, today. I mean, I could, you know, go back and and pull the check register and see who.
I just kind of want to understand the financial impact for folks, how close they are otherwise to retirement and other sources of income. And I'd be interested if we, if we're gonna crunch this, and I don't want to drag this out, but I'd be interested in that median number. I'd be interested in the lowest number, the total number of pensioners in those two figures, the median point in the lowest.
Right, you didn't make a decision today. I mean, I have that report right on my desk. If you're looking for that information immediately or if we're gonna be moving this forward, okay.
We probably will not conclude it today.
Okay.
Okay, so with that information, Mitch, sorry to create chores.
That's an easy, that's, that's easy.
Got that. So, so the question that I, that comes to mind is, as part of the negotiations, it's contracted eighty-six or eighty-seven, whatever it was, was there a cola that existed in the pension plan prior to that?
No.
Had?
This was, this was, you know, like any other negotiation, was a.
Let's add this, we want this, you.
Right, you know, and then there was, it was forty-two, there were a lot of issues.
Again, anecdotally, uh, had the, do we know if the town had ever granted colas to anybody prior to that point?
I don't believe so, because I have the pension document here. It 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 starts to, every time a pension is, uh, is awarded, the pension document got amended. So there's amendment after amendment, and then it got incorporated into a restatement to show on this date, the cola was this much, on this date was this much, et cetera, so each every two years. It kicks off, I believe I can pull it, it's the chair over there, I believe it began in eighty-six.
Would also be interesting to see, I don't know if this information exists, but whether during that time period when there was a cola, if it was just the police.
Yeah, that that much, excuse me, that that much to, just based on my recall from looking at this several times with the board of selectmen, uh, the same, I went back and checked the, um, the town, um, employee pension plan, and it was identical language each time. Each time was a cola, it was like, it was five percent, please, it showed five percent for for the, uh, employees. So they go back. Eighty-six, let's think before eighty-six. So it looks like there was, there was, um, oh, honor before eighty-six, okay, so. So at eighty-six, there was, it went back to people, this when it did start, eighty-six. And it went back for people to go and back if they were in the pension before eighty-one. So anyone was in the pension before eighty-one in eighty-six, actually July one, eighty-seven, award fourteen percent cola, and then it went down to eleven, two, you know, nine, seven, four, three, two. It became a two percent cola for those who were just just retired. Um, and then it looks like, uh, in eighty-nine was a six percent, ninety-one, five and a half percent, ninety-three, five percent, ninety-seven, two percent, ninety. And then again, there's different amendments that go on from there. Until we get to, I think the last one was two thousand six. Like I say, since two thousand eight, there wasn't one of them, the, uh, the two point eight effective, it was a hundred thousand dollars that that the board put in, uh, two years ago. That equated to a two point eight percent.
All right, seeing that we have a request for some follow up information, uh, I would suggest we probably should table this, so is there a motion at table?
So I'd make that motion.
I'm probably, but I just have one more question, okay?
Just one?
Never make that promise.
If, um, there was no mention of a cola in the police contract or any other negotiated contract, is there any mention of in the guidelines for the pensions made to recommend colas from time? We didn't have this particular, um, part of this provision, part of this contract, there would be no discussion about colas ever?
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, you could, you could always do that. There'd be, there'd be no requirement to look at it every two years, you know. There's a cost, there's a cost to the study, so you know, take down the cost of the study. But certainly if there was a feeling that, uh, you know, that that whatever circumstances, reasons were, there was a need for a cost of living adjustment, that that's in your purview, as per part of your purview as as looking at the entire pension plan to make adjustments.
You can ask a follow.
Okay.
He was waiting before calling the motion to table.
I know, I know, um, thank you. You answered my question.
All in favor?
All in the table.
Nice job.
That copy this week.
That's great, thank you. Item seven, uh, received, the correspondence for the residents of Wingate Road. Dennis, you want to come on up for this one? As, as a result of the decision we had made, uh.
About a year ago, yeah, the B two roads.
Right.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, so.
So this was, this was one of the roads that I did get a call on originally, um, and I had, it, the rule is the rule.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Some, they had, they indicated some concern about the ability to to contract, to get a contractor to do the work. But, um, it's good.
Yeah, so as you recall, we did the B two roads because it was clearly stated a B two road isn't supposed to be plowed in our, you know, classification of roads. Uh, we followed through on that with all the B two roads that were determined to be B two roads through the nineteen sixty-one town meeting. And, um, you know, I did receive a number of inquiries from different neighborhoods, one of which you did decide to reclassify to a B one because they were kind of a outlier in that they were part of a subdivision years ago that, um, included other roads to the north that were B one roads up somehow. But they were classified in sixty-one as B two, um, but they weren't really built out at the time in nineteen sixty-one. So as they built out, um, houses, you know, lots in the neighborhood, and then the developer went went bankrupt, they kind of were left in limbo without even an association. So I think based on their plight of evolution as to how they are established, um, it was decided to make them a B one road. All the other roads we've stepped with a B two and we haven't provided plowing services.
A B one road is a private road that we just provide some services?
Some plowing, yes, we provide plowing, but no, uh, limited maintenance.
Is there, hmm, let me ask an challenging question. Is there any, how many houses are we talking about?
I don't know the number of houses, but I could, yeah, I love it. I could, so Wingate, we have good information on when they were built. They were built kind of wishy washy, not just, not decided whether they wanted to be private or not. So there's a number of, um, meeting minutes, selectmen's meeting minutes from the sixties where the engineering department or public works director was reporting the progress of the development of the road. It was developed in an unusual way where there was a set aside right of way because they were still undetermined whether they're going to be public or private. Because as you know, a public road, we need a defined right of way for our ordinance. So they do have a defined right of way, which is unusual for B two road because most of the other ones are nebulous in terms of what their ownership of the right of way or road is. Um, and it was, um, inspected at times, and it was that finally reported that it was gonna be a private road. There was a bond posted for the ordinance to be built, even though it ended up being private. Um, so stay private, um, and they have, and they have covenants for their neighborhood and associations who manage, you know, the upkeep of the roadway and other improvements. They have shared, shared ownership of some common land. Um, and and come to find out the town was plowing them. Um, but they also were, as the letter says, providing street sweeping and storm drainage maintenance. But we also found that the town was charging them for those surfaces. So, so.
How did that work?
Yeah, I don't know. So they, they contacted me to do that work, and I said, no, we don't, we don't do, you know, services for hire. We're the town, so.
Yeah.
That was happening for a number of years.
But but my, put my question, and I don't want to stop you because you might get this anyway. I mean, is there any chance that that anybody bought one of these houses didn't know they were on a private road?
No, it was clearly a private road, uh, at construction. Um, and it, they have covenants for the neighborhood. Um, so it's, it's, you know, and they they wanted to be private, it seems like, at least the developer at the time wanted it to be private. And, uh, it's, you know, lasted like that. Somehow they were being plowed. I don't, I don't know how. I don't know for sure if they were being charged for plowing in addition to the catch basin, they certainly were being built for catch basin cleaning and I believe sweeping. Um, so, you know, I've been working with the neighborhood folks, they had a number of questions, and I just refer them back to our ordinance. You know, if you want it to be a public road, it's a little odd, I told them, because it's a sixty plus year old road at this point. Usually we we accept brand new roads. Um, but, you know, it's not, doesn't say you can't accept it, it'd be up to you. Um, but they would have to meet all these requirements, you know, they have to have an as built up the road. Um, you know, we would, I would have to do an inspection and advise you whether or not it, you know, should be, um, accepted. Um, they'd have to deed over the road to us. They should monument the road as well because that's what we require. Um, so, you know, I think.
How close do you think the road is to being acceptable?
Um, other than its age, they've done a good job of maintaining it. Um, so, you know, I think it's an acceptable road, but I think what they're, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but I have had conversations with them. They're finding the cost to meet the requirements for an acceptance to be high, you know, the cost of doing an as built. Um, I don't know if there's some trepidation in some parts of some of the neighbors to not want to do it. Um, some concern about, I think, about losing the ownership of the right of way and the control. Um, you know, it seems to be some of the concerns I've heard from them in conversations.
It's a little bit where I'm going, it almost seems like they want to publicly maintain private roads.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say that.
I mean, you know.
That was my question, you know, to Jess's point.
If what they want is a public road, there's a process.
Right.
That's exactly it.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and I.
Of course.
Now, I can appreciate the process. There may be gray areas if the, you know, do, would we require the road to be rebuilt up to today's standard? That, that could be a gray area, I suppose. I mean, if the road is basically as good as any other town on sixty year.
Yes, I would say so.
So it means the public safety.
Yeah, I don't want to be unreasonable about it.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't say they need to pave it before you can accept it. I mean, I'm trying to be reasonable in terms of, yes, they've done a good job maintaining it for the age of the road.
But they're gonna have to decide if they want a public road, everything that that entails.
Yeah, I I think that's kind of the gist of it, yeah, yeah. And I think, I think that's where, um, you know, other, like I said, other B two roads didn't have the benefit of having the right of way, that's. You know, other, like I said, other B two roads didn't have the benefit of having the right of way, that's the big real issue that sets a lot of people. In a position where they can't get it to meet the standards we require for it to be a town road, this is the one. Neighborhood that has that opportunity, but they have to decide to meet all the standards.
What you say right away, you mean the total width?
Yeah, they don't have or any width, I mean, a lot of these B two roads are.
Small.
There's, they're, they're, there's either no right of way, it's shared ownership of land or an easement over other, you know, over land or. Um, it's a narrower right of way, um, so, you know, I think. They, they have the fifty foot right of way that our ordinance requires, um. So they have that opportunity, it's up to, I think, you know, I'd advise that it's up to them to make that final decision. Um, I think, you know, you may want to have Pete look at it in terms of. Uh, any legal, you know.
I'll have a look at it.
You know, I've, I've been through courts over. Town roads, private roads in Branford and. There were odd rulings.
The letter.
We thought it was a town road and we lost, you know, like one of those situations.
The letter doesn't seem to address the cost for becoming a public road. Uh, the letter seems to address the cost of maintaining their road.
Yeah, so.
So you're saying that the cost to become a public road, they find private.
Um, well, I think it's both, it's both, I think they had to. My understanding is, and I don't want to speak for them, that it was quite expensive to meet the requirements, they put on contractors to plow their road this winter.
That, that's, that's what I.
Yeah, that's what they're saying here, yeah, um. I think that um. They can, like, you know, they can address that a number of ways, maybe their, their requirements were too high, I don't know, I live on a private road in Guilford and. I, I didn't, we didn't spend as much money as they told me they spent on plowing their road. I think our standards are probably a little less, but, you know, um.
The thing that's, is this, I wonder. Google Maps, right?
Yes.
It's, it's only Wingate Road, it's not that loop at the end?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
It goes into like a cul-de-sac.
Goes into this inner circle or is it the whole length?
It's the whole thing, it's, it goes all the way around, it's a circle.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know why it's called inner, it used to be called inner circle, but now it's all windy.
So the whole, the area that we're talking about is an entire thing?
Is the entire loop, yep.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think I definitely want to have Pete uh. Opine or look at this.
Yeah.
Um, one thing that concerns me is the covenants that you talk about, the association, et cetera, does that require a vote on their part to do something like this that even? While with the town to.
Yeah, I think they probably.
Have to be unanimous as opposed to.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I do have a copy of their covenants, I could share with Pete.
Yeah.
Um, but I also, you know, they wanted to know. Like I would, they would need to address, they would need to update their covenants, but that's on them, um. Because it, you know, talks about management of the road and as well as some other open space property that they own in common and there's some pedestrian easements. We'd have to decide, you know, whether or not those are, you know, need to be public or not, certainly the drainage easements need to be public. If it's to be a town road because it's, um, you know, for us to maintain a road and its infrastructure, we would need those at a minimum, so there's a few. Details, but um.
So I, but I did the point, you know, filter point here, there is a pathway.
Oh, yeah, they have, yeah, I, I've given them all the information as to how to. Um, you know, request it, I think what they wanted to. Know is, should they? You know, is there an opportunity to not have to meet all those requirements maybe or? Or to at least get you to continue plowing them without having to go through the whole process.
I don't think you go down that path until.
No.
If it comes to that, the loose point. You know, it's probably happening a little bit as a few of the more recent, you know, say the last twenty or thirty year. Change of ownerships, you know, that might have been a little bit of a gray area, so some people might be surprised by all this, but that's not our.
No. Yeah, and we have, I mean, we maintain.
And the council says, we'll just say it, you know, who's going to go back and read what it said?
Well, it has.
Well, is it in this neighborhood?
And, and yeah, there's a list of town roads, not town road, you know, like that's available for people that they.
I know it's available.
Real estate agents.
And covenants to be filed.
The real estate agent said.
Phrase in the letter. Um, they talk about the, the road's role in the broader community infrastructure. It doesn't sound like.
It's a, it's a loop, that was why I wanted to look, see what, see what impact this was.
Right, doesn't have any role, it doesn't sound like it has a role in the broader.
No, it's an isolated neighborhood, it doesn't provide any connection to any other neighborhoods, you know, it's not a collective road.
I mean, it's obviously important to the people on that.
Sure.
Right.
Higher road.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I mean, maybe it's something. Um, you know, it seems, seems like they want to talk, so maybe it's something that I'll provide Pete with all the information I have from, that I've gathered from them and maybe. Maybe it's worth having a, I've met with them, maybe it's worth having a meeting with Matt and Pete and them and I.
Yeah, it doesn't sound unreasonable, but they, they have a, they have to.
Agreed. Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, gents.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Item eight, discuss and take possible action on a noise variance application for a wedding ceremony and reception on Jefferson Drive. Uh, they were looking to go to two AM.
Two AM.
Right, um. Uh, police department approved it uh, six to ten. On page two of the application, the, the, the sheet where the chief has to sign off on it. Or the police, someone from the police department has to sign off on it. And uh, the recommendation is to restrict the areas uh, to six to ten PM rather than two AM. Uh, the applicant was contacted and the noise ordinance restrictions were explained. Applicant does, uh, does want extended hours beyond ten PM, however, I explained that this would likely upset neighbors in the area, so. Uh, it has been approved by the police department, uh, but only for six to ten PM. And I'm not sure that I want to. Bear my source with uh, with that decision.
It's a reasonable decision.
I agree, I agree. All right.
Would um. It says, it, the, the police decision, and I understand that would bother neighbors, what if this applicant? Went to his, his or her budding neighbors and they all said, we don't care. You know.
More than a buddy, you have no reason to care.
Yeah.
That's a very residential area, I mean, I, you know, I think two AM is unreasonable, ten AM. And I'm not prepared to go against the advice of the police, but I mean, maybe if it was midnight, I could see, but. I'm not going to make a change.
Yeah, four hour wedding music.
Yeah, that's a residential area, there is no.
Yeah.
Noise, it's gonna be real.
There's advantages and disadvantages in having a wedding not at a facility, it's not often, it has the proper. Infrastructure, Jefferson Drive, I don't know where it is on Jefferson Drive. Uh, but I've been on that and it is. Anyway, I'll follow the police as well.
Yep, all right, so is there a motion to uh? Grant the noise variance per the conditions established by the government police department?
Some more.
Any second.
Second.
Uh, any further? Try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right. That out of the packet because I have to sign. Um, item nine, appointments and resignations, nine dot one, act on resignation received from Beth Brown from the Economic Development Commission. Uh, is there a motion with appreciation or regret?
I'll, I'll make that.
I'll second.
There you go, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, nine dot two, act on resignation received from Latine Cosgrove. From the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission, uh, I'll make that motion, is there a second? With, with the appreciation and regret.
Second.
Uh, a second, good, um, just a quick note. Latine uh, is on a couple, I think he's on Guilford Human Rights Commission as well, and I believe I saw something come across.
I thought something else too.
And he's signing from that as well.
That's true.
Um, and owing to the fact that he has picked up some additional responsibilities, he was a professor at U K, I think he is now going to be. Uh, dean of undergraduate studies, so I.
In the front, right in the front.
As much time as usual.
Yeah.
So, all right, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, nine dot three, act on moving Garth Varian from alternate to regular member of the Shellfish Commission, term expiring to twenty eight, twenty nine. And Greg Cousins from regular member to alternate, term expiring to twenty eight, twenty eight, is there a motion?
I, I'll make a motion, but I have a question.
What's that?
I, I don't think I've very often seen someone go from a regular member to an alternate, what's, what's the? Remove behind that, what's the motivating force behind that?
Regular, it's.
I mean, it's some adjustment within the commission, do we know?
Oh, yeah, I put a memo in your packet, um.
I can't, I haven't been able to open it all morning.
Yeah, you just recently appointed Greg Cousins. Um, he filled John Seviak's seat and normally you would move an alternate up to a regular member. And then put the new member in the alternate seat, and I checked with the chair at the time and I was told that Garth, the alternate member, didn't want to be moved up. So that's why I put him in the regular seat, the new person. But then, um, subsequently, I got an email from the chairman saying that. Um, the Republican Town Committee had kind of convinced Garth to be moved up. To a regular seat since he's been on the commission for a little while, so now he would like to be a regular member. So it's kind of an after the fact change you would be making.
Does Mr. Cousins agree with this?
I have not had any contact with him yet, he was just appointed and not, like, two meetings ago.
He went through all the right channels and he asked to be.
Yeah.
Be appointed, I mean.
All right, so uh, I, I, I move the table, this, um. Pending conversation with Mr. Cousins.
Yes.
All right, uh, and then potentially the chair of the Shellfish.
Yes.
Yeah, just to make sure everybody's on board with that.
Are these two, I'm sorry, are these two nominations through the RTC?
Greg Cousins came in directly, I believe.
Yes, I believe that. Okay. Um. I'm not positive, I don't. And Garth Varian from the RTC?
I believe Mr. Cousins came in through just the board of selectmen, I think, yeah. Um, I believe Garth, I'd have to double check on it, but I think he came through the RTC, I'm not sure.
So, so, and I'm not saying this in a bad way, I'm just trying to be clear, the RTC decided to, after the fact, convince Garth to. Continue as regular rather than. Going down to alternate.
Right, because when I initially asked the commission if he wanted to move up, um, I was told he didn't think he was ready. Um, but then later had this conversation. Um, after you made the, the other two appointments at the last meeting, you appointed a Democrat, I think two Democrats.
Yes.
And they went in to fill regular Democratic seats and then. Um, the Shellfish Commission Chairman asked me if one of them could be put in the alternate seat, I said, well, no, because. Those are, you know, they're filling seats that are Democratic, so it would have to be Mr. Cousins that would make the switch.
Well, we definitely want to feel comfortable that both parties are. In agreement to this before we say it's okay.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so is there a motion at table?
Some more, second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item town request for use of town properties. Um. Act uh, ten dot one, uh, act on request from the Guilford Rotary. To place a sign on the green, advertising a lobster fest and lobster fest five K run, taking place June twenty first, twenty twenty five, is there a motion?
Throw it in the corner, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. That means we only have about a month and a half. Get some miles in.
My legs are shaking.
Oh, God. Still on my calendar on Wednesday, so maybe we ought to do it sometime. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, ten dot two, act on request from St. George and Knights of Columbus to place a sign on the green. Advertising its carnival taking place August fifth to the ninth, twenty twenty five, sign placement. Uh, July twenty sixth to August eighth, is there a motion?
Some more.
Second.
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Um, act on a request from students with the Guilford High School International Baccalaureate Program to use the green on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. For a large mural painting project, is there a motion?
I'll make it, but once again, I have a question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, what's your question?
Where are they painting the mural, I mean, are they just needing space to, to paint it, I mean? I, I couldn't open things, yeah, right.
I talked to the um, person who put the application in, they are going to be painting it on the green, I asked if it would be staying or they're taking it with them and they said, well. They were planning on taking it with them, although they don't have a place to keep it, so if you want it to keep it on the green, they could, but.
I don't think so.
Yeah, exactly.
Water.
Is there a theme?
Freshwater pavement.
Did they say what is going to be depicted on the mural?
No, I don't know.
After the event, make sure every, uh, everything is as it was before. With that, with that statement, I feel comfortable, so take, take it with you.
I mean, so the IB program is nice, it's creative, it's outside of the box, educational stuff, I kind of want to support it generally.
Right.
They could probably have done this on one of the school properties, but I get the idea they want to maybe. Showcase the talents.
Yep, yeah.
As long as it goes back, back to.
Does it, I'm, I'm sorry, because I couldn't open it either, does it say how much space they need and how long they're going to be doing it?
It says a number of people expected at ten, five to thirty, thirty people. Uh, the hours of the event, eleven AM to three PM.
It's on Saturday between.
It's on a Saturday.
Yeah, it's Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. Yeah.
You okay?
Yeah. With the animal displays that we have popping up, I don't see how we can.
Say no.
No. This, yeah, without know, without even knowing.
No, my only concern is that we end up with some mural. Left in.
It's not gonna, it's not, it'll be conditional, it'll be conditional upon removal of the.
Yeah, because if they were planning to leave it on the green, we'd have to know what. The theme was at least, or, yeah.
Weird, you know.
Right, and the animal displays are self. Cleaning and right, they, they get sold, don't they, people, there's a huge donation.
The money goes to.
And the muriors clean it. So this is being request, requested by a program at Guilford High School, but not by Guilford High School, not by Guilford Public Schools. The person in charge is an individual who doesn't have a Guilford Public Schools email address, should we? Want it to be?
I, I, I think we need the faculty advisor to be, to be making this request.
Yes.
Well, we're running out of time on this, but assuming that we get the faculty advisor to verify this uh, as a bona fide uh, program.
Yes.
Right?
Good idea.
Okay. So conditional approval.
Yes.
Conditional approval for getting a recommendation from the faculty advisor. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because presumably the students live in town, so it's a town.
Yeah.
Town.
It's a concept.
But it's not a not, we require it, not, not topic, or normally, or not, you know.
It's something, it's something that we, we need to talk about sooner rather than later, and I have, we'll tee it up with Pete. Um, is, that's under forty people, they don't even need. Even need our permission to go and use the green.
Sure. So somebody could go out there by themselves, set up an easel, just start staining the library. Take the library on purpose.
That's all right.
Um.
Yeah. It's a nice dumpster for the library right now, so it's very good.
And, you know, and it also runs up against the right to assembly, the, the right to assemble for whatever purposes, anyway. Particularly as it, as it relates to political free speech, right?
Get the teacher on board, somebody who's responsible.
Yeah.
All right.
With more.
With, with those caveats, those conditions, uh, try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
I got motion carries. Um, as to the. Assemblage on the green and the right to assemble, um. At least one of the merchants has raised some questions about the rallies that have taken place on the green. Uh, yeah, I don't know, there's been a couple of people have talked about that. Um, and Pete and I had a brief conversation, the right to assemble is a constitutional right. Uh, for, for purposes of free speech, even on public property. Uh, so.
Especially on public property.
Exactly, exactly, so, um. The coordination, the first, the, the first event was. The, the inquiry I received was related to parking. Okay, um, the second one, which I received just recently, Saturday. Um, was around the impact uh, to the commercial activity and parking. And the right to uh, uh, assemble without getting approval or who's approving them doing it, so. I need to craft a response, a second response to that, so, but I will do so after I, uh, talk to.
And the most particular ones on Saturday, I believe they're one hour. They're from eleven to twelve.
Well, typically they're eleven to twelve, but these bigger ones, I don't know, I, I've, I've been out of town when they've held both of them, so I don't know.
I think about five hundred. I think about five hundred people were at the one on Saturday.
Okay.
But there was also, um, a book sale at the library, so there was parking.
Parking shortage everywhere.
Right, but everybody managed to park.
Well, it's a use of private property for parking, that's part of the question.
Oh, I see, okay, I didn't think of that.
And, and, and or the opportunity to, uh, to benefit financially from it.
Yeah. It's very interesting.
So Pete and I will put our heads together, come back with some thoughts on how, you know, what, what we actually can and cannot. Um, legislate or approve on the green, what, what activities can happen, you know, that's the irony, you know, this thing starts at forty people. That's, that's what our document talks about.
Yeah, something about the expectation.
It could be. Yeah, it's, yeah, we don't, and it's all, it's up to the applicant to tell you how many they anticipate being there, that's a challenge.
So, so this is an interesting problem, somebody puts out the soapbox, stands on it and starts talking, and it turns out that the greatest public speaker.
I'd park in the corner.
Since it's low glass. For instance, okay, and all of a sudden they draw a crowd, and then that crowd draws a crowd. They're not gonna, they're not making an application, but there, it's the literal definition of what's required, the challenge with all this is when someone who decides to get on a soapbox is saying things that are vile. Or some or many of us disagree with, and you gotta grit your teeth and listen to that, too, because they're entitled to say it.
Yeah. Didn't the Guilford Peace Alliance who have been, you know, having congregating every Saturday from roughly eleven to twelve for. Many, many years, didn't they ask about that to us recently?
Uh, they did actually, they did submit an application, which we approved.
Right.
Which we did.
Right.
That's what I, I've mentioned to them that they have the right to assemble.
Yeah.
And I've also mentioned that, uh, the individuals who reached out to. Okay, uh, we need approval on that one, that motion's out there, um.
Subject to what we talked about, I'll make the motion.
Good, uh, right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Committee reports, Sandy?
Well, um, there is gonna be a second, um, community conversation, which is a committee of the Affordable Housing Commission. Um, on May thirteenth, uh, at seven o'clock at the Community Center, talking of, talking about, uh, once again, just trying to keep the whole. Concept of affordable housing in front of people. So that, um, they are aware of why we want it and what it means and who can get it and just, but. Each time it's hopefully not gonna be the same thing repeated, but, but kind of the same concept illustrated again, and that's on, so, so that's on the thirteenth. In the evening at seven at the Community Center, and then at the, at the Affordable Housing Commission's regular meeting. Um, monthly meeting, which is the third Tuesday of the month, it's the twentieth at four o'clock in this room, is going to be a developer. Uh, talking at some point, and, you know, those meetings are open, I realize it's a small room, I think we zoomed now, so.
That's David Corus is coming in, right?
I guess it is David Corus, right?
Who runs this affordable redevelopment authority, which now has a new name.
Right.
That's the organization that was funded specifically to just try to drive.
Yes, thank you. I have missed the last two commission meetings, so I'm a little, I mean, I'm aware of these dates, but I didn't have all the backup there, um, so those are the two things I'm mentioning right now.
Uh, this gives me as much of a run up under, uh, business, but, yeah, I will bring it up under, for your own business, uh, correspondence. Business? Business.
Go back to committees.
Yep.
Isn't there a meeting with the?
I was flying that day, unfortunately, so I missed it, so I think I got the email, there's a green use recommendation, it's sort of a. First cousin to save streets, like they're discussing how to make adjustments around the green and the traffic flow.
Yes, that was, that was, that was the result of the study that was approved, and, um, so they're gonna take the.
There's a spreadsheet somewhere that, that, that goes in pretty good detail, there's some interesting stuff there. Just happy to talk with Sam Garrettson, he, he provided a lot of.
It's, it's part of the Safe Streets Commission, isn't it?
No, this was a separate study that was conducted through, uh, through, uh, Council of Governments, that we got some funding for, uh, this project.
But it's really the similar purview, right?
And it, this has to do with traffic flow, there's Stockholm, one way, uh, one way north on Whitfield.
Right, not what you would think.
South on, uh, Park Street, uh, two way on, on, on both ends of the green. And there's, and there's some stuff about, uh. No question, um.
And the fire department.
And bump outs yet, and then there's some bump, uh, potentially putting in some bump outs, which will potentially, uh, reduce the amount of parking spaces, uh, which.
Reduced.
Yeah, will, will be interesting conversation with the Guilford Green Merchants, although.
They were very aware of, of the goal of not reducing parking anywhere than absolutely necessary to make reasonable safety. Honestly, Whitfield Street and Water Street are at best an extreme challenge.
No question, I, I don't, I, I don't think a roundabout is actually being considered, there was a discussion about a roundabout in that area, um, so. Okay, um, no business, uh, this is akin to the affordable housing, um, we have, um. Procured the services of a gentleman by the name of Andrew Woodstock, who was the gentleman that we utilized for the Community Development Block Grant application that we put in two years ago. That was, uh, favorably, uh, received by the Department of Housing, both federally and back end and here in Connecticut, uh, the Connecticut Department of Housing. Uh, subsequent, uh, to that, um, and this is for the Sawmill River, uh, Sawmill, uh, area, Sawmill Road, uh, property that we own. Um, and subsequent to that award, uh, Department of Housing approached us, uh, Connecticut Department of Housing, and said, would you be willing to forego that CDG. Appicate, that CDG funding of a million dollars, uh, in exchange for, uh, a million dollars of state, uh, bond funding? And we said yes, uh, so, uh, something came across my desk, as it usually does, um. Another round of CDGB applications opened up, so my conniving mind suggested that we never got a CDGB. An official CDGB award for the Sawmill project, why can't we apply again? So we had a meeting with, uh, Connecticut, the, the number two at the DOH, Miguel Rivera, one of his, uh, one of his, uh, managers. Uh, they're wildly supportive of the idea, they think it makes more sense. So, uh, we re-engaged Andrew Woodstock to dust off and figure out what's new in the application, et cetera, but we're also, uh, gonna engage him. To put together RFQ, RFP for a preferred developer for that property, assuming that we're gonna donate that land like we did at, uh, the Wood of Property. There are some steps we'll have to go through to get there, um, but, uh, if we can, if we can effectively get close to two million dollars. In the hands of a developer, it's gonna make that project very affordable and very attractive, so, and that's all in pre-development, so. Let's see how we go.
So the, the money, when you did the exchange two years ago, and I real, I remember the whole thing, that one, that first one million is sitting, it has to be used for some. Affordable use, or it's?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, so two million.
And, and has to be used for the Sawmill project. About eleven acres.
It is?
And it's about eleven acres, is, there's some challenges with ledge and some stuff there, uh, we've got a, a preliminary plan that would support six, um, uh, six units of housing. We're talking, we're also possibly talking about in a cottage style, like the ones that were built up on, uh, State Street, the Gray Hill, Gray Hill cottages. Um, so, uh, that, that model, uh, we're also toying with the idea of, uh, ADUs accessible, uh, eight, oh, just. In addition to those on the property, which could further increase the, the impact in terms of affordability, so.
There, there's some, I think Janice told us, there's some wetlands and ledge, but there's definitely some land that is not wetlands. And then the, we're gonna eventually finish that sidewalk on Hubbard.
Yes, we will.
So that'll be very nice, even if that other development doesn't happen across the street, we still would have a sidewalk that.
The sidewalks will be on the north side?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so, unless, I mean, they have to cross the street, but, you know.
Well, there's already a crosswalk actually that goes, that just stubs out.
How far did that Hubbard project get, I mean, are there actually plans and permits?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
The clock is ticking, I, I know why, but I mean, the clock is ticking, permits don't last forever.
Uh, they, they do last quite a long while, right?
Years, decades. And, you know, it's been two or three years already.
It's a very common question, it's a good question, a lot of people wanna know this, so thanks for raising it.
I think anyway, with the townships, could step in in some fashion on that, kind of jumpstart it.
We actually, we were actually working with, and we had a, did have a meeting with the developers, um, because they were interested in. Applying for some of those funds available through David Corus's organization, the MisfulRedevelopment Authority, uh, they fall outside the radius from. Public transit? Okay, so that was within a mile of a train station or something, however, there is potentially an opportunity for us. Uh, to, and I was talking to MJ Kestner about that, um, last week, uh, to, uh, to create a zone that would accommodate them. And give them the opportunity to apply for some of those funds, so they, you know, they're, they're eligible for, um, Department of Housing funds because it's, uh, eight was an eight thirty G, so there's. Financing available through Connecticut Jaffa, whatever, whatever organization has that, that kind of funding, uh. My understanding is it, it's really just interest rate sensitive, um. Yeah, and, and, again, so I, I, and I have talked to the developer, um, he was in, they were in my office longer talking about the Hubbard thing. Um, and so I, 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 I think there's still some concerns about their finances, about pulling the whole package together, but. I don't wanna disparage them.
No, 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 it just seems like we could leverage what we have access to, to get that going, and the goal being to meet our goal of.
Well.
Oh, thirty of them out of a hundred, it was, it was gonna be thirty one bedroom apartments that were gonna be affordable, thirty three percent. But the, the part was we were all wishing it would be. That's twenty, that's twenty.
Twenty one.
Twenty one.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not an eight thirty G.
No.
But that is our zoning code.
That's right.
Which requires twelve percent.
The, the thing about the one on Hubbard Road, we, and I know other people asked the developer this, if they could make some of them two bedrooms, that's. Would have been great, but he has a right to do, I mean, he's within the law of whatever he's doing now. So.
It's just hard to believe that's what the market is telling him.
I know, I know, well, maybe if we were able to. Consent or incite him or incent him in some way, we could possibly raise that question again. Not the whole thing, but just some, you know?
Well, I could certainly go back and talk to, uh, DOH, uh, and see if any of that one million could possibly be diverted.
Yeah.
To the Hubbard Road project, um, as opposed to all, all, you know, all two million of it going to. Right, but, and remember, that's gonna be a hundred percent affordable, right? Uh, this one bill, so, that's, that's the one that we would most likely want to.
The, the, the design and idea of, I mean, even if it only turns out to be six units, it's so much more encaping with the way we'd love to see affordable housing happening. Now, then I'm casting aspersions on apartment buildings, but just the little groups of affordable housing intertwined in neighborhoods.
Yes, absolutely.
Where ten, five years down the road, nobody, you know, you drive to by Gray Hill Commons now, and nobody thinks, I mean, it's just part of the neighborhood.
Alright. Food for thought. Any other new business? Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none, um, let's, uh, move to, uh, item sixteen, discuss to take possible action on personnel contract. Uh, it's executive session will be required, um. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some moves.
Second? Um, I'd like to invite, uh, Pete in, um. Um, so, uh, others take their leaves, um, is there anybody else? Mitch?
Want me to?
What's that?
Want me to this?
Yes.
He didn't mention my name.
No, 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 this.
No, he's just looking up there to see if he's.
I'm sorry.
Want MJ two? Um. Yeah.
Chief is outside.
Different issue.
Oh. Still on, Steve Berd downstairs.
Diane, she's in the, uh.
She always tunes in, she always tunes in.
She does. Trace, wanna make sure Diane, uh. Takes her leave? Anybody else?
I have to come black, please.
Hello. Hi. There we are. We have a vote on it, alright. Hold on.
Oh, okay.
We're still recording. Yeah, we're still recording. Because we haven't, haven't actually voted to go into it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
This is, I'm getting heated now.
I'm a little. Don't know.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, we have a motion on table going to the executive session, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, hands asleep, Trace, stop recording. Trace, she's on the phone.
She's probably trying to call Diane.
Yeah, she can, she's, she's X her out.
Oh, that's right, she has the power. This call is really, that's great.
Is there a motion come out of executive session?
Some moves.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, during executive session, there were no motions made, no actions taken, and none required as a result of those conversations at this point, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves, second.
Second, non-defiable motion, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
We have to have H.